Everyone, grab your attention. It's 5 o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The way we're going to run this meeting tonight, we have a couple of representatives from Planning Department here, and they can only stay till 6 o'clock. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the questions that were asked at the City Council meeting, and go through the answers that I have received for those. Then we'll go to the committee members if they have any questions for planning, then to the City Council members if they have any questions specifically for planning, general public, any specific questions for the Planning Department. And then after that, we'll come back here, and we'll just open it up to any questions from the committee, the City Council, and then back to the general public. So with that, I'm going to go through the questions that we received at the City Council meeting. And I did not get answers to all of them, but I will answer the ones that we have. So the first question that was asked was if there was an inspection form created. And the answer to that is not yet, and that will, the Planning Department would create that. And will it be available for public review? Yes. The other question that was asked, inspectors for each trade or generalists? This is from the Planning Department. They feel that they can teach the basics for general testing and call upon individual inspectors when needed. So they don't see a need for individual inspectors for each trade. Current staff or higher? So we would need to add at least two people, inspectors, to the Planning Department to implement this ordinance, to go from what we have now, which is a complaint-driven system, to a compliance-driven system. Next question. What is planned when the house falls out of compliance because the code has changed? Well, I guess that would depend on what was changed in the code. So I really can't address that at this point. There was another question about failed inspections due to tenant activity. And we're still, did not get answers from the Housing Authority how they handle that then. Appellate rights. So if someone disagrees with a fine, and there's a citation written, the citations are filed with the court. And if the person disagrees with the citation, then a judge would set a hearing, and that person could present their evidence. If someone disagrees with an inspection, the ordinance specifically states if a person does not want Planning Department to do their inspection, they can hire their own private inspection to be conducted and file the results of the inspection with the Planning Department. Still checking on Water Department, Housing Authority, and La Porte County landlord registrations. Startup costs. There would be, of course, the cost for the two additional inspectors, vehicles, their personal protective gear, computers, et cetera, all the office stuff that they would need. Another question that was asked. Tenants get a copy of the report, and then tenants break stuff and call the city. I don't have a response for that. Exemption for landlord-occupied buildings. That was a request for an amendment. Displacement. So I did reach out to the director of the LED grant and asked how they dealt with displacements in those cases. And they initially encouraged the tenant to seek temporary housing with a friend or relative. And if that's not possible, they do have funds for remediation displacement. Language from the grant states as follows. The assumption is that 50% to be remediated will require relocation. The average cost for relocation is expected to be $100 per day for up to 10 days, equivalent to $1,000 a unit. So that was also a suggestion for an amendment. So we can talk about that at some point. There were two, or four other questions. Can we prioritize the inspections? And the answer to that is yes. And then there were some comments about too long for Section 8 inspections, that people apply to do Section 8, but it takes too long to get the inspection, the inspectors into the houses. And I'm still checking on what the timeframe usually is in that. So I think that addresses the questions that we had at the meeting. So now I would ask if Mr. Petrie has any questions for the Planning Department.
Well, yeah. The only thing that I have a question about is something that Councilman Hamilton brought up. He stated that all of the issues that are addressed by this proposed ordinance are already in the standards, are already in the municipal code. And there are already statutes that control those and regulate those. And that the issue isn't that they aren't there, but that we're not enforcing them. So my question to the Planning people is, I understand why you probably aren't able to enforce them all because you've got a very loaded staff and a lot on your plate. If we had additional staff assigned, is it feasible that you could enforce what's on the books and accomplish all that is in this ordinance?
I'll take that one. I'm a lawyer, so maybe she can help me out with this one. The way I understand it is we don't have the right to just go up and knock on the door and get a bill. So to say enforce a standard on the plumbing isn't functional in the building, unless I have an inspection warrant, I don't have the right to just knock on the door and get a bill. Someone has to actually follow the report. And that's where a lot of this breaks down, is a lot of the tenants feel threatened by actually applying. They call us, they send in a complaint. They know that the date that they contact us, they probably did their eviction notice. So they're just hesitant to do it. So this would allow us to go in regularly, annually, whatever it might be, however it's written, to go in and inspect without the tenant making the complaint. So there's the difference there. Once we get in there, you know, yes, we can enforce the things that we see. It's getting in the door that is sometimes a problem.
Okay, so it's discovery of the issue itself that's the issue here. Because the tenants are reluctant to bring that to your attention.
Sure. Okay. Sure. Can I answer your question?
Yeah. No, it's fine.
First, may I have work enforcement? When we get a ton of landlords complaining, nine times out of 10, that tenant is in a process of being evicted out of property.
Yes.
This is not meant to punish the landlords, but it's meant to bring up everything, the standards, code for human evocation. I've got 24 pictures of houses. I've been to random houses that show what kind of filth people are living in, whether it was by the landlord or whether it's caused by a tenant. When we do go in and inspect, we also have made a change in our inspection department that we're not going to blame everything on a landlord because there are certain aspects in the codes that the tenants have to be responsible for. Cleanliness is one of them. So if I walk through a house and I see garbage throughout the floor, I'm not blaming the landlord for it. The tenant's going to get a letter, same as the landlord, stating what they have done wrong, what they need to correct in this situation. I know everybody thinks that landlords are getting picked on. There are a lot of properties out there that are... Your question is, would you eliminate?
Please, sir. We need to let her speak, and then we'll be at time for public questions.
This program that we're implementing is to prevent situations last minute, people getting evicted because they're not paying right because the conditions are bad or you created conditions. I don't want to blame the landlord on everything. But I also find something, seeing something in this ordinance that holds the tenants accountable as well. Some kind of documentation that's signed during a lease with pictures of photographs, something that shows that, hey, I'm the landlord, I present you this property. It is off the standard and past code. Here's a certificate. It's a copy, goes with your lease. And then when you break the lease, you get evicted, and I find out that you destroyed my house, I have still a right to go after you in court of law for that money or have some kind of fine uphold against you. And I know you're laughing. I get it. I used to do same thing. I get it.
Please, please, let her finish.
I also want to see some kind of penalty towards the tenant as well if they violate the conditions or warrants and stuff. Something a lot of light that is held inside is possible as well. And, you know, it's got to be well documented. Not just, you know, all the walls perfect when they moved in, and, you know, they kicked it out, you know, two months later. It's got to have pictures, you know, describe what wall is. And, you know, I get it. I really do. I feel for all the others. Unless you get in my shoes and does some of these inspections, it's a scary place in Michigan State to see so many about housing. It really is.
Okay. Does anyone have any more questions?
No.
Does anyone else from the City Council have questions for Planning?
I have a couple of questions. Craig, if you want to answer these. So if we hired two more people, we don't have to get vehicles for them, correct?
Potentially. We're currently trying to evaluate our vehicle situation at the parking, so it's hard to say.
Okay. From a cost standpoint, what's a good cost? To hire two people, get two vehicles, if you need two vehicles, and all the other supplies?
I believe the current salary ordinance for code enforcement officers, something on the order of around $41,000. And then you have, obviously, benefits on top of that.
Benefits.
So times two. So benefits are probably roughly 30%. So do the math on that. You come up $50,000 per position, roughly. And then a cost of probably around $30,000, give or take. Between $20,000 and $30,000 if we use a vehicle from the state pit, for example, which we try to do. Or get used vehicles from police department, which we have done basically pretty consistently. So, you know, something on the order of worst case, never $160,000 initially, and then roughly $100,000 annually for the, you know, I guess, additional roughly $60,000 if you get two new vehicles. But we usually don't do that, so...
Okay, and then I guess this ordinance, does this apply to every rental unit in Michigan City? And what I'm getting at, when we're talking about like Canterbury apartment buildings?
No, it does not.
Normandy Village, Pine Tree Courts?
No. If you have a Section 8, that inspection would be accepted in lieu of the city inspection. So we would still make sure that it was registered. But those inspections, it's stated in the ordinance, are covered. Also, owner occupied is also one of the exemptions.
Page 6.
Group homes exempted. Occupancy by the purchaser of a dwelling unit under a recorded contract for sale. You can see them all in Section 22-813. Yeah, on Section 8.
22-813.
Page 6 of the...
Well, City Council, City Council questions for the Planning people. Don, did you have any other questions for Planning?
No, just not a question, but a comment. Not so much for Planning, but for the ordinance itself. Looking at the penalties and fees for violation of the landlord. I believe, I don't know where those amounts came from, if they came from South Bend, but I think that they're too high. They need to be reduced. I can understand penalizing someone for not following the city ordinance, but I think the amounts that are in there are far too much to penalize a landlord.
All right.
So I think that's something that we need to work at and probably amend just in case.
Any other questions for Planning from the City Council? Okay, I'll open it up to questions for Planning Department only from the public. Any, yes. Please state your name.
Yeah, my name's Lisa Dure. I live in Iowa. I own some properties in town that we invested in. We turned them into nice properties. We hope, and the renters that we have are really good renters, and they pay the rent on time. They repair things when they need to be. We invested money to make them nice properties. And I think it's a good thing that the properties that aren't being kept up are encouraged to be brought up to standards. I mean, I know the city has invested. We're in Elstebrook. The city's invested in Elstebrook. And we feel like it's a good investment putting our money there. And we think what the city is doing is a good thing. A couple of questions that I had were, first of all, I heard that there was a fee for each inspection. And I read in the document that there is no fee for the inspections.
That's correct.
But you are penalized if you don't register, which makes sense.
First two inspections. So even if you fail the first time, the second inspection is free. Then the penalties accrue after that.
And then the other question is, some of the properties are in really bad shape. And, you know, I don't know who owns them. I imagine that if they could fix them, they would. One of the properties we bought had a hole in the roof. I don't know how anybody lived in there. Water had to be gushing in. And, you know, the windows were broken out. Anyway, it was in bad shape. And, you know, I don't think it's fair that somebody should live like that. And I understand why, when they left, they broke out all the windows. My question is, the people who owned it prior to us apparently couldn't pay to fix it. It needed a good amount of money that we put into it. So how do you help the landlords? Do need help. You know, this is how they're maybe getting by, making a living, making a little bit of rent. I mean, I don't know, you know. I'm sure some of them can afford it, but some of them can't. So how does the city encourage that? The reason I ask that question is, I know there was like facade rent money for the downtown area to do some things to help you guys reach your goal of bringing the city up to, you know, higher standards. So I'm wondering how you're going to help the landlords who maybe do need some help or encourage people to paint the outside of these houses that look really crappy? You know, how is the city going to help with that as opposed to filing fines? I mean, you're just going to make the problem worse, I think, if you, some of the fines were like crazy. Like a lot of money would add up really quickly. So that's my question. How do we, you know, work with the landlords to move forward? And I don't know who has an answer to that or if that has even been...
I can answer part of that. If the question, if it's out of compliance because of LED, we do have a LED abatement program, grant money, to do LED abatement for houses. So that's one avenue that's available to renters and landlords and homeowners. So that would be one avenue.
To get the houses remediated?
Remediated, right. Correct. Depending on what the issue is.
I thought I checked on that. And it wasn't available to just anybody. There had to be somebody who was on welfare.
No, not, well, it's, I don't know what the last time we checked, but we just hired a program director for, and this is a federal grant that we just got. So I can't remember all of the criteria, but if pretty much if a house is built prior to 1978, if it has, you know, children that visit it or live there, it's pretty inclusive.
So if there's children, it doesn't cover?
No. No, there's several...
Sue in the back, correct.
Sue.
There are two different programs that are available now. One of them will be starting soon. So the program is, one you are actually required to pass, and you have to qualify under that. You're absolutely required to qualify when you're probably visiting the town. The other one is that it's going to be next few months. That would be called... And the criteria is much more relaxed. It could be a matter of a younger child lives in the house or a younger child regularly visits the house or there's a criteria. The criteria goes on down. It's, we have X number of dollars, X number of units we need to abate. And the way it works is we give the priority to those that have children. But once we exhaust that, then we just keep going right down. So that opportunity will be available to you and to do our program. Not as far as money.
Is there a question to see details of that?
We just hired our program director for that. She's in the process of writing the manual for that. We hope to have it soon, but it's not... But we do have the money. I mean, the money's there. The money's been already given. I don't know, there's things like windows were a big thing, and roofs. I see a lot of roofs. Roofs are pricey, you know. Tenant hasn't... There are a lot of LED in roofs. Yeah, true. But, I mean, does the city have any plan as far as like how we encourage, you know, upgrading those things? I mean, that's the key element. Roof isn't okay for you. You could fix everything inside. You're going to have a problem with the garden. So those were just my thoughts as far as... Love the program, love the idea because we're investing in the city and we want to see, you know, the city come up. You know, some of the properties that are in bad shape also, you know, look good with the rest of it. So just how can we, how do you get there with everybody?
Questions for the Planning Department only, right now, please. Mr. Sherman?
Pete Tensier Street. The number of rentals you have in the city, how do you come to where it's only two peoples who can be able to do inspections and keep them up current? Because, to be honest with you, I've tried getting in Section 8. I've done a lot of HUD homes, FJ. I know the rules haven't done good. I've been vet certified. And you go down to the houses authority and say, well, I have my house inspected. Go on to the list. Okay, let's go pay. So first word is that if you fail, it won't matter one. So if I fail and I fix the problem, how long is it going to take to get the house inspected? And they come back and they say, well, you know, he's really busy. Don't know, might be a month. Well, I'm not going to wait for a month or two. I have taxes to pay. I have insurance to pay. So I'm wondering how two guys are going to be able to take care of all these rentals in this city? That's my first question. The house that you bought was a Section 8 home prior to New York. And it was in that condition after their inspections.
Yeah, there's a reason.
Yes, because they have rules that they hold. One last thing. For ordinance 4020 of 2008, fire alarm, we're already registered with the city. We're required, everyone is. So why do we need to be registering with the city? And so now? That's an ordinance that rounds about me. We have to be registered.
I understand that you register as well.
I am asking that because we don't administer that ordinance. So I'm sorry. The Planning Department does not administer the fire inspection.
So how, the first requirement is asked that we would incorporate it.
We should. If they've only got 1,200, which I call a problem, how would all the rentals? So that's not even important. So how are you going to get it? And part of the explanation on this was, well, we can't, we have a bad landlord. We can't find out who they are. Well, how do you, if you don't know who they are and can't find out who they are, how are you going to get them registered? Even with ordinance? Roof's not registered. So I think the legislation probably, we've already done that, be registered. And, you know, I don't know what the answer there is. Either somebody's not researching far enough to find these people or something. Because there's only a few of us that you would consider sitter to be bad. The majority of us are good.
So could you speak to the difficulty in identifying the owners?
I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. There's no way that means they're in their current capacity in that, that happens. That's why whenever they presented and said, what do you think? I went, I got at least a minimum two. But it's kind of a gradual difference. You can get to everybody in the first year. There's not a chance in the world we're going to get everybody in the first year. But there's a rotation. So we may get to a third one that first year, then the second year we're going to get to another. But there can be inspections that can happen at the time of the mandate. But are the initial inspections going to happen between the hours?
No. It's not going to happen. It's not going to be... The ordinance is being threatened. You cannot look at this as a current inspection.
But you have some language that says that there's a rotation in there. There's many, first years, second years. Initial start is complex. All the cities, this ordinance is, a similar ordinance has passed in a number of cities. And they don't do it all in one year. You can't change it overnight. It's going to happen one year, no. But can it happen over a period of three years? Sure. I believe that's feasible, you know, feasible ever there. It's a whole process. And you're right. A lot of these we know right off. I can look around this room and I can go, I'm not going to get in trouble with this tax. I'm not going to get in trouble with this person over here, okay? So they're going to be a year free. But the ones that I know we can target for the county. It's a matter of getting in the door. Right now, we don't have the ability to get in the door.
It's part of the landlord training because you're... What it goes back to, when I rent a place, we take pictures of ceiling, doors, walls, smoke alarms, yes. Inside, outside of that house. And they have to sign off on that when they move in. That's absolutely the best. When they move out, we take pictures of everything again. So, you know, it's, it's just a matter of doing what's required. But again, I don't understand why we can't just, uh, we can't go after these guys if you know them bad, that has a strong reputation, just like we do if, uh, anybody else who has, they have roof on their house, or anything, that's insane.
And, and we work for it, but remember, we can't get in the door and then we have to. We admit that we're in the worst area. That, that, that's obvious.
I, I just, I, I can just see that several years down the road, it's, it's going to come along. Because one, per, let, let inspection, as you know, you have to be state-prained, state-licensed for, for the inspection. You have to do radiation, you have to do that for the health test. They all have to go through the state for the test. And those are not cheating tests.
We, we already have twenty-three million dollars in that. So, that, that's kind of separate. It's just for the landlords out here, an opportunity to get some help.
Questions for the planner, planning department only. Part, issues in the planning department, call enforcement and plan.
Okay. You keep saying that you don't have the authority based on the building codes that we have right now who go into the building.
Unless they get an inspection.
So what do you need in that ordinance for you to be able to do that?
Separate registration.
Part?
Separate registration. Once you've registered, then you become part of it.
Well, my question is.
My question.
We're all getting hit with this. But we can all drive through this town and see which houses are bad. And if they look bad on the outside, they're gonna be bad on the inside. And I have fought this city for years to get you to follow the building codes you already have, and they're not followed, they're not enforced. They find, they say they find these people and they don't, it's a threat. They're given chance after chance after chance. Thirteen years. A house has been given a chance to be a rehab, sitting on the boulevard. It's still being rehabbed. That's our major issue. But now we're starting all over with a new ordinance. Because we can't get into the buildings. Is that correct?
That's correct. They cannot just go up to somebody's building and say that they want to inspect it.
Okay. But you can enforce the ordinance for anything on the outside of the building. No windows, no screens, holes in the basement. And that's not even being done.
We don't have the staff to do it.
Well, why is the planning department getting the staff to enforce the building codes they already have first? You're putting the cart before the horse. You're gonna go in there, make it countable, and it's still gonna be falling cart around it.
We do address a lot of houses in the city as a co-investment officer, but it's a repeat thing. I go to one address continuously every day to babysit. We have to give people a chance. This is America. We have to give people a chance to fix up their house and everything. Thirteen years? Oh, that is, I might have been here for two, so.
Okay. Which house are we talking about?
Are you talking about the house that's in demolition status?
No. They've been, they've been on it for thirteen years. You have an address? Uh, right next to Call Ten, Michigan Boulevard. Drive down the boulevard.
At the.
I'm guessing it's Corales.
Which is a demolition status house.
Uh, they actually have a tax, so unless they're needed, they don't have a tax. But I did get a little bit of a question.
Well, one of them, in fact, it's not demolition status, but they were allowed.
Which one, they're, which one under. If a house is in demolition status, actually it becomes an issue with the board works. And it's no longer, if it's, they deem that it's up for demolition, it becomes an issue with the board works. The Corales house is a good example. The house on Michigan Boulevard is a good example. We tried for years to get that house demolished. And I'll just, just gonna put it out there, the board works continue to extend and extend and extend and extend.
That's, that's what they're doing.
The board works in this case. And ultimately, so the house I think you're talking about, they're given chance after chance after chance by the board works.
But shouldn't all the departments in Michigan City work together?
Well, certain places, certain departments have different authorities and certain, when something becomes a story of the building, or, sorry, the, uh, board works, it's up to the board works to decide what the disposition of that property is and how quickly it takes place. And that has been a problem property for years.
Will this force to change that situation?
I know that's, the demolition status, if a house is fifteen.
Please let Craig answer the question.
A house is deemed for demolition, it goes, it becomes a part of the board works agenda.
And my team was funded by the taxes and if it's in a, in a city, if it's in, if it's on, on taxes, it's considered for a year. That's automatic, because the tax has gotten to a period, no, they did not do it for that year. So there are other criteria besides that that we have to look at.
Questions for the planning, uh, department? Yes, sir?
Uh, I'll be brief because I know we're on a time limit. My name is Michael Stevens. Um, some of you know me because I was the first president of landlords association. I've been practicing business in real estate law for thirty-nine years. Is Amber here? No, I'll put her out. Um, I will just say this, first of all, before we get into the ordinance itself, uh, and I, obviously my comments are directed both toward the planning commission and at the council in general. First question that, that tenants, the first issue tenants raise, I'm, everybody in the department is showing it, is that there are not enough good apartments available in Michigan City for them to choose from. That's not the fault of the people who are here, who are trying to keep their properties up. But this ordinance, among others, but this ordinance in particular, is a disincentive for people to invest in property, to improve their property, and to try and get good people in. It does affect the general status of Michigan City if we can continue to attract good people, especially young people, to come here and move into our apartments. So, uh, as a business proposition, as something to encourage commerce in Michigan City, I realize there are health and safety issues, but this, this ordinance is a disincentive to do that. Is that how?
And your question for the planning department, how's?
Secondly, um, my question is whether, I don't know what the other ordinance say because I haven't seen them, um, from other cities. But as far as this one is concerned, there's no question in my mind. I don't know what, what research has gone into this previously. Um, I realize it's a general discussion here. But I will tell you that based on my experience and my review of this, this ordinance is unconstitutional in its face. And if, if the planning commission has got a.
Can I try to do something? Because I wrote it and we've tested it and it's in four other states and the state is not.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that it's, that it's constitutional.
What, sir, sir, what is your question? Sir, sir, question for the planning department?
My question is, number one, to what extent has it been that in terms of its constitutionality?
State Supreme Court.
And, and I know it's come back and forth, but there are issues in here that, that are vastly different than what was raised. But my, my question, so that's my question, number one. And number two, with respect to how this could possibly be enforced, Sue hit it right on the head. This, this ordinance is being viewed, viewed simply as a vehicle, well, not simply, but as a vehicle toward the city to get into someone's home, to inspect it. And by the way, not everybody's home, just landlord's property, to inspect it. Because at, at, at this juncture, as of today, the law does not allow it. So I understand what the purpose of it is. But in, in reality, I agree with Sue. This is, this is, uh, this is a way to do that. The problem is, uh, the constitution and other, other laws in this country do not allow you to simply decide as an entity, as Michigan City. Do not allow you to decide, we're going to use something like this as a vehicle to do something we are not legally allowed to do now. I understand all the issues, we're getting all the problems. But that's my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the planning department?
Yes, my name is Doug Sims, I'm president of Northwest Indiana Landlords Association. And I have a question for Sue. Last, well, you made the statement that you couldn't get into premises to make inspections and that when you did, it triggered an eviction notice from the landlord in regards to those. But our clients are calling you so that they don't have to pay rent. And when you look at the percentage of cases that you have, how many of them are legitimate complaints versus the tenant not paying rent?
I think you missed the point that, that they are, they're, they're hesitant, they're contacting us because they know when they can contact us, it's, they're, they're, they're gonna start the eviction. And a lot of these people have limited resources, they move to another property.
They don't contact you because they themselves aren't taking care of the premises. And they themselves will contact you to make sure that we get put under the gun. Because when they contact you, I know I can find it. And I get it done. And for a couple of the cases that you knocked on my door about, lady hadn't paid rent three months.
Still doesn't mean she doesn't have to live in some kind of.
She doesn't have to live, but I mean.
I understand that, but that's what you've got to write. That's where you have a right.
If she, if she doesn't pay one of the three months, how am I gonna pay my property?
Why can't you just pass three months? That's my question. Oh, second one. I got it. All right, all right. I've done, I've done property management and with their behind, running for his month, that's when he started issuing after thirty days. Am I correct?
Try to get to court system. Try, try to collect your.
Let's, let's, yeah, folks, folks, let's, one, one person talking.
But my question, the question is, Sue, and the planning department, and the inspection department, when you consider the level of premises that you do get into inspect versus landlord's action upon those inspections, when you contact the landlord, does it get done?
What happens usually nine days?
Does it get done?
Can I finish what I was saying?
Well, I'm just, you're up.
Please let, let her, let her finish.
Absolutely.
There are some landlords that are responsive, yes. There are some landlords that'll write a letter back saying, I will have it done in this amount of time. There are some landlords I'd give time to because I know the tenant is playing games with them. They don't want to move, they want to play the eviction game and stuff like that. There's a lot, there's a lot of landlords here that know me personally. Can I not, can I not give you a heads up, say, hey, I have an issue with the house? Am I not correct? George is right, I mean, there's, there's some places and stuff like that.
I have no problem with the quality department. I got the, I got a problem with the quality of the children.
And that's, hey, if the quality goes up in your apartment and it's copped up, as maintenance in front of the house, outside of the house, back of the house, inside house, you'll have a better tenant.
I once had.
Okay, sir, sir, with questions, questions for the planning department? Ms. Drake?
I have a question for the planning department. So just to clarify, this ordinance for landlord registration and inspection as well as the lead grant, the main function of those is to protect the basic safety and habitability for families living in these properties so that they are safe. So like, since with the lead grant, the reason why families with children perhaps might be more likely to be receiving more funding from the first grant and this other grant is because in Michigan City, some of our neighborhoods have twenty percent of children testing with blood, blood levels that are beyond what's acceptable and suffer lifelong physical and intellectual consequences because of the lead.
That's not.
Lead, well, I just wanted to ask if the main purpose of these provisions is to ultimately keep all human beings safe? Because every human being has a right to be safe, have a life.
Somebody from the planning department?
Are we answering the question?
Yes.
To answer your question is yes, that's the basis for this sort of.
Thank you.
Pretty simple.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question about the part in here that says, uh, someone has to reside in Indiana, authorized or demanded to rent the unit. Um, I don't know whether that, so what's the point of that? I actually live right in Michigan, right over the line, I'm fifteen minutes away. So is somebody to live in Evansville, Indiana? And B, where is that? Why, why should I have to hire someone to manage my?
Sue did have a random.
I would not be opposed to it offering a geographic, a local of some sort. I don't, I don't have a problem, I understand what you're saying. But for me, probably enforce something on an Illinois lawyer or a worker where they don't respond. But if you come to lean on the property, they don't, I don't know. I, I don't know, I'm not opposed to changing language, so it's, uh, you know, hundred mile radius around it. Some that you can call and they can actually not respond. So I, I understand your point.
Okay.
I have a question for the land department. So with a question of like well-income landlords who might not be able to work in a building available, which is obviously a considerable problem in the city. Uh, I know the lead grant funding is gonna be available before lead abatement. Is C D E G grants, is that something that can be used in a situation like this? I know that's part of the.
You can mind that the purpose of C D E G, a lot of that is.
It's homeownership based. So the recap program, for example, is, is a C D E G program that's homeownership based. Um, so, I guess, you have to make a decision if you're gonna become an investment property owner. You know, do you have the resources to keep that property? I don't know if it's the city's job to pay it. You know, money to keep up the property, and it's a decision you make if you want to get involved in investment property. It also has a bonus upon you if you do that. And I don't know that the city should have to bill personnel because they made that decision. I think that's a possibility to do that.
Well, you're building, you're billing, no?
Yes, I'm back, please.
Um, I have a question. We have a representative of.
Can you speak up, please? I can hear you.
We have three historic districts here in Michigan City. We have worked with the planning department on numerous properties that need to be restored. So forth. My question is, how is this one to affect the, uh, the Elton Road, the city example, of, uh, rehabbing or loaning, telling people in the Elton Road district, they have to do certain things whereby, to not familiar with this, they are under guidelines which they have to replace, get a new home in a certain manner. You can't just go ahead and fill in the missing. And you require my ordinance, my board, to basically, uh, rehab this home to restore value that.
The outside.
Very, very. So my question is, is this one also applies to historic districts and rehabbing? There are many, uh, many code units in historic districts. So my question is, how is that gonna play out?
There have been discussions at various levels about providing some funds to assist homeowners in historic districts and with rehabbing their properties. But again, I'm gonna say, if you choose to get involved in investment property, you need to know what you're getting into and what it takes to maintain that property. I, I don't know that the city, you know, the cities in the past have offered rental rehab project or programs, they never work. And they never work because it's a situation where, you know, a person has made a decision to get involved in something that they can't, they can't take on, or they, they've got a problem and they can't chew. Again, is it the city's responsibility to bail out that landlord? I don't know. It's a decision as a landlord to get involved in an investment property. An investment property, like you're not as a business, you're making a business decision. And at that point, homeownership's a different situation. That's surviving for yourself, for yourself and as, as a homeowner. You make, you also make a decision in a historic district and buy a house whether, you know, it's in a historic district. And it should be, there should be some sort of disclosure as to whether or not that's in a historic district.
Well, you know, that's all a mission right now.
But that's an issue too, I know that.
We're talking about missions right now and there are people who are in historic districts and not realizing, um, of course, that the end goal that is going to be out, out.
So there has not been, there's not been a discussion about assistance program for rentals. There has been discussion about potentially, uh, assistance programs for homeowners.
Right.
But that's all I can say at this point, there hasn't been.
Is there one, is there one discussion, or is there one that you're basically, that hopefully, we're comfortable with?
I can't say at this point whether that's gonna happen or not. It's happened on the radar.
So you're looking at what?
Okay, so the question then, so kinda I understand what you're saying. And the question then becomes how you pay for something like that? And there are limited ways in which the city can pay for something like that. And we look to the mayor and the city council to determine whether or not the funds that are available to the city are, you know, should be used for that purpose. That's not a decision of the planning department, it's a decision of the city council. Whether or not funds will be made available for that purpose.
Is the grant on?
Which grant?
The grant.
Oh, sorry, uh, it goes for, what number of months is it? Thirty-seven?
Well, it's forty-two months.
So there's about ten more minutes for planning questions?
I have an opportunity to mention what I see are problems with this ordinance.
Right, yes, yes. Questions for the planning? Yes, sir?
Would this ordinance be necessary for complexes that have an office where people can just walk into? You say it's hard to find people. We're right there every day. Like, complexes that have actual rental offices.
So there are a percentage for, let me find it here. Basically, if that's true. I'm trying to find the exact orders.
If it's five or less, they'll inspect them all. If six or more, they'll inspect ten to twenty percent. And if they find the proportions in there, they give it a second warning.
Questions for the planning department? Yes, Sean? Yes, Sean.
The lead grant keep being mentioned. And I'm wondering if this isn't a way to kind of give referrals for the lead grant? Because I know that has to be voluntary. So is this a way to kind of see how we can get that grant satisfied? And then whatever other consequential things they find during inspections, kind of do that on the back end? The lead grant keeps coming up, and I'm wondering why is it...
It was not my intention when the ordinance was drafted.
Yes, hi. I was going to bring up the lead. The problems I was having, because I do rent to low income, when you go into getting energy, you know, efficiency, and get the lead checked, I'm not getting any cooperation from the tenant. So, you know, the grants are available to them, you know, through me, but they're not cooperating. They're saying, "No, I don't want that. No, I don't want that." So it makes it difficult for you to, you know, do it. Like, if they have children there, I said, you know, "There's a grant, and, you know, if you have children, you know, we could have it checked." And every one of them denied, you know, having somebody come in and check it.
And back up on that with the planning department. I give you the authority to go and inspect it, but that tenant can say, "No, I don't want you to come in." Because once they sign that lease, that is their property to live in, and you cannot go in even if I say it's okay. So how are you going to remedy that?
You know, there's a clause in the landlord contract saying, "You need four hours to come and inspect your apartment."
Not you, not anybody else. If there's an emergency, the fire department, police department. But they do not have to let anybody else in.
If it says so in the lease, they do. Mine lease says 24 hours notice. Or an emergency fire department, police department.
All right, all right, let's...
You should have that in your lease.
Okay, we're talking about questions for the planning department. We've got about five minutes before they have to leave. So is there any more questions for planning? Yes.
So you guys are going to do blood tests on each one of these inspections when you guys go out?
Only if you apply.
It's an application-based system. If you apply for the grant, it's voluntary system.
Correct.
Sir?
How many houses do you anticipate using this grant?
I can't answer questions about the grant.
Is it this ordinance necessary for you to administer this lead grant?
No.
Because the lead grant is voluntary.
Yes, sir. Sir? Please, please, please.
Are we going to talk about the rental of the unit being compromised? That's a good question. So the tenants that we could not... And are we not going to do that anymore? Because under the fourth amendment, they have that right.
They do.
Questions for the planning department? That would be a question for legalizing. So... Sorry.
So you can revoke my right to rent. You can revoke my right to rent if the tenant refuses to use it.
Could I answer a little problem? Please. So I'm a law professor at Notre Dame. I'm a property expert both nationally and in the state. And I helped write the South Bend ordinance that you took. The legal issue is comfortable to own a restaurant. If I own a restaurant and you come in to eat, you're guaranteed that the food's not going to be poisoned, and the health department can inspect it, and the people at the restaurant, yet so you can't inspect the food here. This is exactly the same. You've decided to rent the property. So therefore, the city government, state government, has the authority to say that apartment or that house has to meet basic health and safety standards. We're talking basic health and safety standards. We're not talking, you got a piece of plywood off the side of there. We're talking heat, water, ceiling's not caved in, mold's not growing outside of the wall. And so that's why it's constitutional, because you've made the decision to rent, you've made it a commodity, just like you do at a restaurant. So would anybody here want to go to a restaurant, the health department didn't have the authority to say the food was not poisoned? So it's the same thing to say, "Tenants have the rights to eat." That apartment, that needs basic safety standards. It's the same.
For you, why is it good on a long-term lease or anything over 30 days that is correct? They can't. But why is it on a short-term lease, they do not? But why is it the state has no regulations for short-term leases?
They do.
You have to talk to your state when they consider...
Yeah, but I mean... You can't talk to a short-term lease, but why do you want a long-term lease?
I have a question for...
Why, are there any other questions for planning? They're going to leave in another minute.
This is volunteer, right? It's a lead-based inspection program. But I define it by... So how is it? So is it... So is it... Is it driving all the lead-based inspection that you're going to do?
Well, the lead-based thing is volunteer, but there are certain requirements that you have to meet. Very few houses meet those requirements in the city.
But how many houses meet? When they have, if you've got to make a broad statement, you have some...
Well, I agree totally with what you're saying, but I've got the requirements right here. I just have one house.
I just want to know, if my tenant doesn't let you in that building and she locks herself in, is the planning department going to call the police and haul her out so they can go in there? That's what I'm saying. I know what you're saying is legal. All this stuff is in my lease. But if I go to my house and I need to get in there and it's not an emergency, call the police. Doesn't matter. They're not going to let you in that house if that tenant is still in there.
One, we're going to talk.
But we're stopping through who's here.
We're having a meeting here. One person will speak at a time. So I don't believe there's any more questions for planning. So I want to thank, I know they have another meeting to attend, so I want to thank the people from the planning department for attending tonight. So now I want to bring the discussion back to the city council. Any questions concerning the ordinance or comments concerning the ordinance? First of all, from the committee members of planning and zoning? Any questions, comments? From the committee members for planning and zoning? Okay. Full city council questions, general questions?
Okay, well, on page number one, and Sean and I were just talking about it. It looks as though the lead grant program tied into this. A gentleman over here was asking...
He left.
Yeah, he left. To whereby if the landlord doesn't get the property lead tested, then they're in violation of this...
No.
Let me finish. Because it says, whereas it said, "Lead grant requires the city to maintain a list of lead-safe rental properties within the city."
Correct.
Do you want to explain those?
Sure.
Both wheres?
Yes.
So that everybody here understands?
So the first...
And so do I.
First, whereas clause just talks about the 2.3 lead grant. The second clause says that part of that grant requires the city to maintain a list of lead-safe rental properties. So if a property is inspected and it's lead-safe, they can add it to the lead-safe program. It's not required, it does not require it as part of this, but as, you know, a feature of this program, because we're keeping a list of rental properties. If it's lead-safe, we can give that information to the lead-safe grant program. Anyone else from the city council with questions?
One of the concerns that I have is that things like this would kind of open up some potential for targeting of certain areas. Because, you know, I know where I live, I don't see a lot of houses too much. And there are, you know, where they're for sale and maybe the yard may be open from a little bit. But certain areas of the city you ride through, and whether they're all rentals or people that are just in disrepair, it kind of seems like the focus could be shifted in certain areas. And if there's a greater plan to try and redevelop some of those areas, this seems like it could be a vehicle to kind of get those people out of there. Because some of these, you know, everyone has a standard. Like, you know, some people won't drive a car unless they cost over a grand or more. And some people can't afford cars that cost over $500. Now, because of where their standard of living is, can we say, "Well, if you can't afford a $70,000 car, then you can't afford to live here," period? And if we raise the standard so high where the landlords that aren't in this room, because I'm assuming that these are the people that we aren't talking about right now, the landlords that aren't here, would that put them in a position where they either have to let their properties go, which would put them over to someone developer, or someone that is going to rehab it and maybe sell it, which is more ownership versus rental? And then some small shrink of rental pool for people that already have struggles with finding rental properties? So that was one of the main concerns that I had, the displace certain people, but also kind of draw for certain areas to get kind of pushed out of their rental areas.
So I would direct you to 22-811, on page 3A, where it says, "This program is designed to ensure all Michigan City rental units meet the minimum property standards of the International Property Maintenance Code." So that's kind of the basic safety standards.
What page was it?
Page 3, page 3, 22-811, section A.
And who would agree with those standards? That's already...
Those standards already exist in our... Any other city council comments or questions? Okay, open it back up to the public. One person speaking at a time and no discussions. Just...
Hello, my name is John Payton. I've been managing rental property in Michigan City and elsewhere for 39 years. I've never been called on the carpet for anything wrong with ours. I have discussed such ordinances in other towns as well and what the problems come up. I've made a list. I'm not going to read them to you. But I would like to distribute it to everybody who might be in on this decision. And the other things that was here mentioned today, I think are very good points, even though you may have an answer to them, I just think you need to sort of reconsider your answer as well, because there really are some difficulties in this area.
I'd like to have a copy now.
So if I may, I might pass out a few copies.
Sure.
If you have any questions for me, please, if you call me, I'd be glad to help the council in any way I can. I'll just all the same. Any others like some of these?
Mr. Payton, you have any other questions or comments that you want to make?
They're all right here.
Okay, very good.
So I am not in Michigan City, but I was asked to cover my decision calling. I mentioned we want to make a project about your name on our school. I wanted to point out a couple of things. We did this statute, this ordinance in South Bend, and interestingly, we have two rental associations. So one landlord association supported it full. And the reason we did was that they felt too that they were being punished by landlords that weren't complying with law and they wanted help. Indiana law currently, by the way, and I'm very interested to know why landlords would oppose this, because Indiana law right now gives the duty to comply with all housing codes, with rental property, to deliver rental property to a tenant in compliance with all housing codes. In other words, it is the state law already. The problem is because...
Sir?
One problem is that there is no enforcement mechanism in the law. So that if a landlord is violating this, there's no way to enforce it. That's why the ordinance is needed. That's why other cities have put the ordinance in. We have national experts coming to the United States of America in South Bend, and I'm sure you could get that information. Cities that have done this have found housing conditions improve, rent prices do not go up, general health of the community improves, because when people have safe housing, they're healthier. We know this. Kids stay in school longer, because the single reason that kids miss school most is asthma related to mold and houses. What I would encourage, because it is a real issue, we did create a fund to help what we call good landlords, landlords who want to do things, to try to fix things. Also, that the rental inspection shouldn't be about... It should be about general problems. I see, that's shaking. And there are not going to be tenants displaced. I have been working with the city so far since we implemented the ordinance in May. We had nine families who the house was condemned. When the code went in, the house was sold, and it was condemned. And I had to help those families find other places to live. And I think that's going to be necessary now. We're available, legal services available. But we created a consortium of nonprofits in the community to help house these folks, because we're not targeting those of you who are trying to do a job and trying to rent places, but you're already required to handle up the code. So this notion that bringing properties up to code is going to drive landlords out of business, if you can't bring your property out of code, I don't need sympathy for you. You shouldn't be in business, because that's the law.
Yes, sir.
You know, we talked about being inspected for lead. Now, once you're inspected for lead and you find positive on lead, it's the same scenario as when I worked in the industry and we did asbestos. Once you asbestos, you found it, you sealed it. It was so expensive to abate it that most people couldn't do it. Now, once we find lead, and I'm sure that probably 80% of the properties that we own in this room are older properties, you dig deep enough, you're going to find lead. It's been sealed away for many years. Many coats are painted because we have to paint over because these renters we have make a horrible mess of our places, so we just keep painting them, right? Are we required, when they find lead in our place, to remove it?
I can't speak to the details of the... Maybe Sue could.
Yeah, we're not testing for lead. That's not part of this program here.
Well, if you're not testing for lead, how do you know it's lead-free?
I'm checking to make sure they have working plumbing and working electricity in it. The basic means, we're not over testing for lead unless you request it.
Then we take it out, boy. Because by statute, you're not required to do anything other than notify the person that's buying property or moving into a house that's built before 1978, that wood more likely has lead in it. And that's only that. By rights, for most people, we'll paint it, paint it with silvers. It's not chewing on silvers, guys. It's when we have a wood window that slides up and down and creates a dust, and when the windows open, blows across the floor, and the kids on the floor crawling around, playing with toys, sucking on the toys and this, that's how they do lead. But by law, the law is that all you have to do is hand them that tablet and say, "You're moving into a house that has lead." So it's your choice, will I want to find another house or... And I don't want to see no kid, I really don't want to see a child with brain damage from this, because that's what happens when they learn to their abilities. But again, the tenants, when they move into these places, just like if you go to my house and you look at it, there's water spots on the ceiling, the toilet's leaking, the basement's wet, look underneath the kitchen cabinet, water, are you going to buy the house? No. Everything you're looking at, it looks like crap. Go on down the road to the... Look at it, it looks like crap, go on down the road to the next one.
So the only standard that will be held to an inspection are the building code standards I mentioned. The whereas clause, if they wanted to be, you know, to make utilize the lead safe program, if people are unhappy with the whereas, I would happily amend the ordinance to take that out. But I would like people to know that they have the opportunity to utilize the $2.3 million grant that we have.
And that can be accomplished by telling the landlord that you don't have to put it in an ordinance to tell him. That can be done, just like you do with the homeowners now. Because you're on the radio, we have a grant. Don't tie it into this, because you're going to scare off, that's what's got a lot of people scared of here, because they don't understand the law.
Okay. Yes?
We were just looking at the ordinance language a little closer, and there is a directive that has your policy. You have actual statutes, so just want to make sure we understand there is a directive.
In the building code standards.
In the... We just read it.
It's in here, it's not in here. They're supposed to...
Chalking aside.
Yeah, and it said it talks about deteriorated maintenance requirements regarding that. So just so we're clear, it is in the ordinance, right? So it's something we need to consider.
Oh, yes, so leading that.
I'm part of the South Bend Landlord Association, and I am also on the Board of Directors for the Indiana State, working with state investors. So I'm very familiar with the inspection in South Bend. I will say what is being pitched to you tonight is not what will happen. Eighty, we got the same steel in South Bend, Judy and I have had many debates over this. They will tell you they're only looking for safety in the houses. Eighty-four percent of the houses inspected in South Bend have failed. The landlord association was very pro. Matter of fact, the vice president got off a Tuesday council meeting and said he was in favor of this. His properties have not passed inspections, and it's costing him on average between $3,000 and $5,000 a house to bring it up to city rental inspection standards. They said the housing, the inspections are worse than the HUD inspections. They will be targeting you for lead. They will start in areas where lead is more prominent, and when money runs out, landlords are going to be responsible, because they're going to know who has the lead violations. They know what they pitch, it's not what they're doing. Eighty-four percent by... Railing on stairs, different. One had a part of the trim was pulled away from the base of the tory.
Sir?
Yes, section eight housing inspections.
There are standards where you can hire your own inspectors.
There is in this as well.
It should use the state law.
It is in this ordinance as well. Sir, you next.
Okay, the section eight housing inspections. Which one will have precedence in the section eight, while your inspection?
If you get a section eight, you don't need our inspection. You just need a certificate from section eight that says that it was...
So basically, what you're saying is then, it would encourage all us landlords to have our houses up to section eight standards, correct?
That is one thing that I had questions about regarding... One of the questions that I had answered, that I would like to have answered, is the timeframe it takes to get a section eight inspection.
Well, I understand it takes usually two months. And I said, as landlords, you have to eat it. The thing about the section eight program, with them, you get a big hunk of the money from section eight, you get a little bit from the town, but you get a big hunk from section eight, it's actually to your advantage, because you're in section eight. I know it's a program that is very hard to get your arms around the first time, but once you do, I have 18 rentals, and I have over 10 of them right now in section eight. And I'm working on getting the rest of them up to those standards and going to section eight, because of how that program works.
And another thing that...
In Michigan City.
So I...
Pay them.
Yeah, pay their rent, yeah. So sometimes it's up to 100%, sometimes it's as low as maybe 100 bucks.
And so one of the things I also wanted to look at is some sort of workshop on getting into the section eight program, if it's something we could work with the housing authority to set up some sort of informational meeting on that. Yes, sir.
So are you going to develop a list of requirements that you have to have for each rental?
There will be like a checklist that the inspectors will have, and that would be up to the planning department to develop that based on the standards.
Before the ordinance is passed, will that list be available wherever it wants to be?
Probably not.
If it must have had phone registration, couldn't they give the checklist prior to the inspection?
It would be public, it would be a public record, so yeah, I mean...
I have another question from the South Bend. I wanted to know, what was the biggest success of the South Bend program, and clarify some of the others.
So I'm on the group that's meeting to assess it internally, right? But, first of all, and I'm sorry that you brought that up, you must be trying to go back to them, that they're specifically supposed to be looking only at certain habitability things and not the whole thing, and they're not really, that's something you should be aware of. Landlords can voluntarily get their house inspected, you come in, it's inspected, you're good for five years, right? So if you voluntarily call and say, hey, come inspect my house, it's inspected, you're good for five years. I think your ordinance is similar.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And so one thing is to encourage landlords to just do that, and take care of it, again. But it's, they started, and again, this is your city not mine, but I know it was a good idea, they started with houses that were already having complaints against them. All right, so the idea is to try to weed out those bad players right off the bat, and get people out of those really hard homes. The same thing is to encourage people to do for section eight.
Yes, I did ask a question. I wanted to know, from the section, the South Bend program, what were the biggest successes that made some shortcomings of this?
From what I've been told in meetings, there's really only five or six bad landlords in the city. I have said on more than one occasion, there are laws in place for management companies that if the cities would crack down on the management companies, that they would not have as many problems with your bad landlords that you're trying to control.
It's the state that has to, which the state is very lax on that, and she's had...
So if the city goes in and says, I need to see your broker's license, I need to see your certification to manage these properties, I need to see this stuff, and they don't have them, the city can shut them down. Because they're mandated by law to have this stuff. If they are not brokered, if they're not certified in Indianapolis. One of the downsides that I have seen in South Bend is after this ordinance passed, on some of the websites I'm on where they sent me houses to buy, and these are nationwide websites, there were about 10 houses listed after this ordinance passed, they have between 350 and 1,200 houses, rentals, in the South Bend. People that are not in the city investing, they will take their, they'll take their money off of us.
Can I also address that, though? Because first of all, there's a, there's a national investment, landlords investment guy who's talking over, and if you listen to NPR, you can hear him, he's quoted as telling everybody they need to invest in property in Indiana, because it's the most landlord-friendly state in the country, you know? And judges will get in, as by law it is, and judges will do anything that landlords want. And many people pay lots and lots of money for this, but anyway, she's had a lot of properties bought up for sale, but about a third of those belong to one very bad, very illegal stamp artist. And I've heard a lot of properties are all for sale, and they've been bought now by some people who are actually trying to fix them up. So it isn't a bad thing to get investors out of your community that aren't upkeeping their property. You should want that, right? So that's not a bad thing. You should be encouraging people who want, and again, you can be, out of state owner, you want to be encouraging people who are managers locally that are taking care of their property.
I'd like to address this issue.
Oh, wait, please, I'm running this meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
In the state of Indiana, just this week, I was at the courthouse. I have three victims defendants. I went through an entire process. On the case of two victims, I had to give them 10 days. After the 10 days, then I could file in the court, which was another 10, 20 days. When I got into the eviction proceeding at the court, the judge gave me 10 more days. Now, add that up, that's one month's rent. If I was patient and didn't go down there after the first day and didn't pay the rent, I had two and a half to three months income. Now, after I go through this process, I got to go back and we can have the building.
This isn't, this isn't an eviction proceeding?
No.
Quiet, quiet, quietly. And by fact, we have three of the cities with the highest eviction rates in the country. We have more cities with the highest eviction rates in the country than anybody else, and nationally, you would have to wait at least 30 days before you can get into court. So, and tenants have no right to withhold rent to make repairs, like almost everyone else in the country. So you may not, you may think it's bad, but you have the best laws in the country for landlords.
I appreciate, I appreciate all these comments, but let's stick to the ordinance. Please. Yes, sir.
Well, what he was saying, it plays a part in a landlord being made hope that when they file a civil suit, the tenants just walk away and don't think about paying them ever, period, period. So now, I have to put my home back together, using the money from Robin Peter to pay Paul to put the thing back together, but still, I'm losing. I hear a lot of things about covering the, I mean, I hear a lot of things about covering the tenants, but I don't hear nothing about covering the landlords. I mean, you said that the judges are doing anything for the landlord, that's not true.
I did not say that. What, one person at a time?
You know, so it plays a part, civil trying to regain and being made home, plays a part in a landlord putting his property back together.
Sir, I also just talked at this, yes, yes.
I just...
No, this lady here, sorry, you'll be next.
Hello, just a general comment in support of this ordinance. I moved to Michigan City about seven years ago. I lived in a rental property street. I don't know if the property owner is a registered landlord, I don't see him here. Needless to say, within a month, my roof started leaking, mold started growing, and he claimed that he would not be able to fix it if I didn't pay my next month's rent in advance. Luckily for me and him, I was financially in a position where I could do that. A few months later, a few months later, I've got a plumbing issue. He sent somebody to run over to the property. Do you want to know what I found in my backyard? A bunch of my waste, and in my basement. And so I tried to call the health department, and they didn't come and take care of it immediately. These are the types of people that people have to live with. And fortunately for me, I got out of that house, I got into a much better living situation, and I had great landlord experience. And then, later on, I bought a home in Mr. Simmons's ward. So, I mean, I'm just saying, if I had a negative second landlord experience, I might not be living in Michigan City, I might not be contributing to this economy. So think about that from a economic development position, too. And that is all I have to say.
Sir, I'm going to try to...
Why did you want that place?
Please wait to be recognized before talking. This gentleman is next.
Yeah, have you had an opportunity to review the landlord money grant application process? Not everybody is eligible. Very few people, in fact, are eligible to utilize that grant. I had an opportunity to utilize that grant, and an outside third party came in, and they spent two and a half hours testing the house, the residence, for lead-based paint. They had specialized equipment, they sent samples back off to the laboratory, and the result was that, yes, there was some issues, and the brand is going to cover those issues, which is great. But I guess my question is, how is somebody going to test to that capacity for lead? I mean, we know that any house built before 1978, that's lead-based paint. So how are you going to have somebody come in and determine that you have lead-based paint problems, if you don't go to the extent that these third-party inspectors have done? And the qualifications, they're not concerned of houses unless somebody under the age of six is occupying the house, and also, they have to be on certain qualification chip program or other programs to qualify for that $2.8 million or whatever it is. So it's a great program, but I guess I don't know how many people are going to actually qualify and take advantage of this. And if you're going to do lead-based paint testing, to what degree are you going to do it, or what training are individuals going to have to do it? And I spent a lot of time talking to these inspectors, and they didn't have a lot of confidence in these hardware store test kits that you buy, because they can give false readings. So if you're going to test for lead-based paint, who's going to come up with this amount of money to do a good job? I mean, we know that every house built before 1978 has lead-based paint. If that's a wear, made of wear to the tenants, or the property owners, or whatever, along with the caution pamphlet, then I would think that we've met qualifications, unless you're going to really get involved with a very extensive lead-based paint testing program.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, simply correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but there's been a lot of stuff about lead hazards and lead paint. Yes, a ton of houses in Michigan City have lead-based paint, they will all be filled with it, you know how old the housing is, but lead-based paints isn't a lead paint hazard. So I have a house with lead-based paint, it's perfectly secure, I maintain my property, it's not hazardous unless I pick an hammer, bust a trunk off my wall, and kick it. If your housing is not well-maintained, and you have chalking siding, and you're crumbling windowsills, and you have chalky paint on the walls, you have a lead hazard. Lead paint is not hazardous unless it's not paint. So just like people said here today, if you maintain your property, it's not hazardous to anyone. If you don't, it's a neurotoxin. And maybe, but, you know, here we have red parts of this city, where 20% of kids are showing up for being poisoned by something that damages their brain or life. So please maintain your property, don't take, oh, it's just paint. No, it like, this kid's major behaviorally, like, mental problems for their entire lives. There's no cure, you just manage the damage. So lead paint, yes, it's out there, not every paint is a hazard.
Square it.
I have a comment that I would like to address to Charles Wood. If I heard your questions directly, you were talking about, your first book is related to a process called gentrification which is, has been used by large cities to direct development in neighborhoods. So I would just advise all the landlords, I support you a hundred percent, but be careful that you're not going to be used as a tool, an instrument by which Michigan City gets gentrified. You know, once the young lady said that, very, very interesting about how many, how many homes were on the market or rental property were on the market after this was initiated. Something's leaked, has been the last three weeks, I've received calls and little letters wanting to buy my property. Only have one rental. Well, the only reason I bought that rental is because I was paying support, I lived downstairs, ran the upstairs out. Then I finally had the ability to move out and I ran both of them out. And they're fantastic shape. Now, how do people outside of our community know they want to buy our properties? I mean, it never happened before, all of a sudden it's happening now. Like there's a leak in the system where these people that are investors know that there's going to be a flooded market in this city. I don't think I'm not thinking about selling. I got until twenty twenty to get rid of it. But the other statement is, you know, it's really weird when we talk about shortage of inspectors. I talked to you before about my neighbor that has squirrels running in and out of his softets. His place looks like a frigging jungle, but nothing's done about it. My renters have to look out that window, it's been that way for years. I've seen nicer houses in Michigan City condemned and taken down. But your department, now we're over flooded again, now we're going to over flood our system again with no ordinances and no inspectors and nothing's going to be done. So if they find this room, we probably have nothing to worry about, because I can call them up anyway.
Okay, the section eight inspection that they have, they have a checklist. Why don't you use that checklist? Because that's a federal checklist that they have to go by for your city ordinance. Most of us who are ahead and have section eight are going by that checklist already.
No, 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 no. We haven't, we have not determined, we don't have a checklist yet and that would be, uh...
But if you use theirs.
Well, there would be a discussion we would have with code enforcement and planning as we will follow with this, but it's a good suggestion.
I would like an explanation of the fees, the penalty fees, that I want to know, uh, maybe if you can tell me when the ordinance is going to affect if they know there's an increase of rent because that's being passed on to tenants?
Law states cities are done internationally, that hasn't happened. I thought you had.
Landlords eat it?
Yeah. I'm really curious of the explanation though, like the two hundred and fifty that has not been inspected, like when do these all go into effect during expired certification? That falls on the landlord, that we have to set this up every so often or will we be contacted? How do they have these to work?
Well, we would have to have an implementation plan when we start, when we start this. And we can't start it until we have the personnel to do it. And I will also think that we would have to have some kind of prioritization. So if, uh, you know, voluntary inspections, maybe we could do X amount of them, you know, per year, but we would spell that out. There would be no way that they would be finding somebody for failure to have their place inspected if they had, you know, uh, applied to have it inspected and we didn't have the personnel to do it.
Say that again? Can it say that? And if you read the thing that says, in Indiana, you're directed to put money, rent money towards repairs in the event of your landlord has a major repairs within a reasonable time.
That's not the same. That's not the same. If you notify a landlord, they enroll, and they have to fix something, you can take the rent money and fix it yourself. But, you know, if it's a roof they have to repair, you can't just stop paying rent until they fix the roof.
You also have the right to terminate your lease agreement with proof these premises become uninhabited.
You can terminate your right to maintenance, yes. But you have to go into court to do it.
Exactly, they can withhold their money, it's like a long way.
Well, if you guys flip people with low rent, that's fine, someone else can stay there.
Question on here. Number three, whereas in many cases, including emergency, I definitely identify landlords are very difficult LLCs, out of state owners, absentee landlords, blah, blah, blah. How is this ordinance going to help you find these people? Because they're the ones who are the biggest culprit to this problem.
They would, they would be required to register with...
And they're not even doing what they're supposed to do now for our city ordinances. So how can you enforce them with this? To notify you who they are?
We have, we know who some of them are already.
Well, if you know who some of them are already, you're talking about houses that you could look at them from the outside and mark them. Why aren't the codes being enforced now?
I mean, we've gone over this numerous times here and the code enforcement people do not have the jurisdiction to just enter a house and inspect the plumbing or, or something like that, it's not obvious from the outside.
So basically, this is just making sure that the living conditions inside are up to code. But the outside of the house could put a blight on the whole neighborhood however it wants and the city is fine with that.
I did not say that.
Nobody has said that, ma'am.
Well, they haven't said anything about it.
True.
No, you guys remember when Gary was a beautiful city, remember that? We all used to go to Gary, go shopping, do this, do that. I remember that. Remember my rose colored tents from Bobby Gary, great. You go downtown, you were safe. Gary put an ordinance in that made the people put all the houses up to code, they made massively put slutters on their garages. And they kept putting these ordinances in, an ordinance is in, people moved out of Gary. They had all different ordinances. Look where Gary sits now. People walked away, I don't know what kind of rentals you guys have or what they're worth, but this one here says seventy-five hundred dollars a week, whatever. I know one thing, they start hollering out like that, I'm walking away from my building. They can have it, they can tear the damn thing down. Because it isn't worth that much. That for having Gary, that people walked away from their buildings and now we're stuck with a bunch of empty buildings. They're going to keep pushing these ordinances?
All right, one, one person talking at a time. What? One person talking at a time.
This lady has... Why can't they go through tax codes to find these owners?
A lot of them are LLCs.
There's nothing to trust.
Quiet! You want, I just need one, one meeting. Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to get back to the ordinance. My point, my end point is this, there are remedies available right now in our law to address everything that is covered in this ordinance with one exception. And that is what we were talking about earlier, the right of the inspection department to just come in. But they, there is a remedy in that situation, within that situation, for them to obtain a warrant. So my point is, we, there are remedies, I understand the intention, I understand the, the ideas. But remedies exist right now in the law in Michigan City for everything addressed in this ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I gotta do it. Well, I have two rooms that's right by my house. The one next door, there was, it was a one bedroom house, a real tiny house that an old lady lived in and she left. And there were seven people living in that one bedroom house. There were four adults, three children. And I had to put privacy fence up between us because of the children and the mother. But once they moved out, I put to the owners a bid to buy the place just to have peace next to me. Well, kind of, he didn't want to sell, but he got sick and passed away. So I went to his wife, same thing, she got sick and passed away. I knew the kids, so they sold it to me. By the time I got into that place, they had a squatter in there. But that place is totally destroyed. Every wall and driver I ripped off of it. It took me over two years to refurbish that house just to get it ready. But I had a piece of concrete behind it. And one across the alley was a HUD house that had sat there and deteriorated for years. So I bought that because everywhere I worked, I lost a pension and they closed. The last place I worked was at the school system. I was trying to get my ten years to get a perfect deal. Well, unfortunately, I got seven years and they outsourced us. So that pension went by the wayside too. So I never got a pension anywhere I would say. House challenge, open standard, pummeled here, pummeled here still here, but under a different name. So I bought these two places, kind of subsidized my social security and that's all I get. My social security and the subsidy from these landlords. I'm not a slump lord, if there's anything needs fixed, I do it. Or I have to. I just spent over five hundred dollars on one next door to use the bathroom. When I began that HUD house on across the alley, I completely had it redone. Your inspector came in, went through and approved everything. So if there was anything need to be done, I fixed it and I still do. So I don't need you to come in and inspect it when your inspector's already been there when I finished it. This lady that lives there by herself and she has very low income. I don't charge that much, I don't charge what the other renters charge. Because I know they can't afford it. And she gives something that subsidized my social security. You're going to come in and ding me for that, ding me for that and go start costing me money. I got three houses in this town. I'll sell every one of them and move out of this town because I'm retired, my wife's retired, we're done with work. We don't need to stay here. I can go back to Arkansas where I came from and not pay property tax at all when you retire me. You don't pay property tax or something. But my wife is raised in Portland, this town, our sisters are all here. Anytime your inspector wants to come and inspect, I don't care, but don't ding me and charge me for lead or anything else like that that somebody put in there forty years ago. Which I don't think is any in here because I completely redone all, wouldn't work at all. I don't agree with your argument. I get, I get stupid letters and calls from people from California wanting to buy my rentals. I don't know how they got my phone number or my... My wife finally told them that last night, she spoke with them. If they didn't, she was going to file a lawsuit, because we are not going to sell. Not to them anyway. I may have to sell from Texas ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone who has not spoken, I have... Yes, sir, yes.
Like I like, I'm going to do it this too, because I invented a four plate for my son over in the historic Madison Wood on H Street over there. And, you know, it's like the headlines of, you know, catching a bad landlord is... I run me a website, put up to show little landlords and people that go visit like I do, repaints after every tenant they refurbish, everything on a twenty-four hour call faces and address every problem that's been asked, I've been in my business. And just like the lead paint, you know, this is a story, and I've got some of these buildings that have been there since Michigan City been built. But every tenant that leaves, I completely put a sealer over, up to date paints, repaint the whole apartment building each time. Now, how does that go be tested to go back, how many layers, they're going to go all the way back into the fabric of the wood to tell me if I covered up a lot of paint, that I have to remove that paint, but, you know, plus the procedures. And I just want to know about any protection for the good landlords? That, you know, somebody go on the website or put a website up for somebody that's working for a clean, well maintained apartment. It goes there and the city would support that just like they do it for a babysitter out of town. You know, that they come in and inspect them, say, yeah, this one here gets an A, this one here gets an E. You stay at whichever one you want, whichever one you can afford. But it just, uh, when I see the, you know, front page of the paper, that's the bad landlords. I'm a landlord, but I'm not a bad landlord, but I see, I grabbed that article, it went to the, all the way through, right to the site they said you could pull up the ordinance and punch that in to print it off and it wasn't a baby. So, you know, it just, uh, I got here late, I had a whole American office set starting at six thirty. And like I say, but, you know, it's going to be fair for one, it's going to be fair for all. You know, people that's going to have to absorb the cost of getting inspected, that's fine. If, you know, are they going to inspect every house in Michigan City for that for this two point five million dollar grant? Not just the landlord, not just the rental property, going to work the cutoff for everybody that you make for eating. They're just singing about the landlords. They're going to have, is that a problem? It should be everybody in the city, every house being inspected for that, not just the rental property.
So we've got copies of the ordinance up here, if you weren't able to get one?
Okay, Kim, okay, I have a question. So you're going to send the inspectors in to look at the rentals? And I have property that I am not renting right now, okay, I've had enough. But if you're renting and you have an inspector come in and they say your house is fine, then you rent and after they steal your refrigerator, your stove, your washer and your dryer and your grill, okay? Is the, is the city willing to go to court with these landlords and say, yes, we inspected the house right before they moved in and they did do all this damage? Will our city stand behind us?
I mean, you'll have the, the inspection certificate.
No, 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 I'm telling you, go into court with us.
You can bring the inspection certificate to court.
How much does that work? I, I actually just talked to the city attorney about that. Yes, the city inspector can be subpoenaed into court and brought forward and explained that the house met these criteria and this is the condition a house would be inspected. So yes, the inspector would be going to... David?
David?
Just have a say. It seems to me that as the city as a whole, we have a real hard problem with enforcement. And as soon as there's a problem with enforcement, we have a bad habit as a city, instead of attacking the lack of enforcement, we come up with another ordinance that doesn't get enforced. If, 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 who's responsible for enforcing the law? And if, if those parties are responsible for enforcing the law and they don't enforce the law, what makes you think that by creating another ordinance by the same governing body that they're going to enforce this ordinance? And we have a bad habit of that. Not only is it this ordinance, but the job ordinance, but the fire miss ordinance, the, the, uh, all these different ordinances that we have. The gentleman said it there. He said that there are already remedies that will alleviate the problems. The problem is enforcement. So again, who's responsible for enforcing the law? Don't attack the ordinance, attack the lack of enforcement. Who is responsible for that? If you create another ordinance, it's not going to do anything. No ordinance is good, is lack of, is enforcement. You have to enforce the law. I've heard a couple of councilmen say that. I heard Ron Haltz say that last week. Months ago, I heard Councilman Beatrice say that. I've heard Brian, I've heard, uh, Councilman Dispatrick say that. And that's the main issue. Why do we keep creating ordinances and we won't attack lack of enforcement? Who is responsible for enforcing these laws? And if you don't attack the lack of enforcement, I don't care how many ordinances you come up with, they're not going to get enforced. That's the problem. That's the bottom line. You don't have to create new ordinances, you just have to enforce the law that exists.
The purpose of the meeting, I, I've seen a lot of you have spoken today, so many of you have spoken more than once and many of you have spoken to the audience instead of to us. And the committee meeting is really to give input to us so that we can make a, a decision on this. But it's clear to me from what I've been hearing tonight, many good points and many points that were stressed multiple times, uh, that this ordinance should probably be tabled, that this committee should probably recommend that we table this ordinance and we have an opportunity to do more research on it. So, um, as a committee member, and Ronnie, you should be up here since you're a committee member. I would move that we, that we table. I'm making the recommendation that this committee recommend to the council that we table. He's seconding.
All in favor?
I am indifferent.
All in favor?
I, I...
Okay. This meeting is adjourned at 6:30.